Up is attendance. Stephanie, would you be willing to do that?
Yep, Becky Bysel.
Here.
Ryan Davis.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Hadine.
Here.
Stephanie Mom here, Dave Pimble.
Here.
And Kelsey Waits.
Here. All right. So first up, we have a motion, or is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, and with this, though, I would like to draw your attention. I apologize for my slight hesitation in a sentence there, my pause. We did have a last minute ad regarding, like in just the last couple of hours of a bid that came in from McCullough. And so it needs to be passed before the next facilities is planning to meet. However, we can move it if we want to, to be an individual item on the 12th. But Cam is here tonight to talk about it with us. If we want to go into that in more depth and hear about that and then make a decision later about whether we want to take action on it tonight, or if we want to move it, so we can move it off later, too.
Am I mistaken, or isn't that in the consent agenda? So we'll probably have to pull it out of consent agenda if we want to discuss it, eh?
I think.
Correct, and it's. Yep, it's pulled out.
Oh, it already, as we speak, it's, that was sneaky. All right.
Well, it was not supposed to be in the consent agenda, so it was meant to be an individual action item, but there were just some wires crossed. So it's taken, it's, it's taken care of now. It's an individual action item.
Yep, I was just looking at it and it was in one spot and then it moved. It's like, oh, okay. All right, great, perfect.
Sorry, sorry.
That's just fine.
Okay. So is that okay then, having that on there tonight, and then we can make a decision at that point whether we want to take action on it or not? I just want to make sure everyone's comfortable with that since it's a new ad. Okay. All right, great. So is there any more discussion about the agenda? Nope. All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Did we ever get a second, did, did we ever get a second on that?
Yeah.
I don't think.
We did? Beautiful. I just didn't hear it. Okay.
Um. All opposed, say nay. All right, agenda passes. All right, so then we have the minutes from the March 24 regular board meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. So thank you to everyone who's on here tonight. I'm excited that the board will be able to hear from you in just a moment. And thank you to everyone who is watching from home. And again, if you go to our website, you can follow along with the agenda on Board Book and actually take a look at the items that we're viewing. So we have announcements and recognition. So what is our good news this month?
All right, so we have Mr. Jim Jacobson from our music department here to share with you some exciting news that's impacting a lot of kids and the band and the choir. And so I'll let him take that. And then I know he's got another announcement he wants to make after we've talked about the awesome kids that are on.
Yeah, thanks, school board members. Superintendent McDowell, it's great to be here. Good to see all of you. We are honoring today our all-state band and choir members. We had a number of students that participated in the all-state program this year, which is the top honor in the music world. And it's simply that, it's all-state, it's from throughout the entire state. So we're talking hundreds and hundreds of students from schools throughout the state. Audition hundreds of students, and then a few select students are selected to those all-state groups. So these are top-notch students and they are, they are top-notch people as well, I'll say. They're involved in numerous things in their lives. And these are often the kids that do everything. You know, that are, that top in everything and do everything. So I know we have a lot of students that were, that are either working or have sports tonight, and they've communicated that with us. So I know we have a few of them here. So all-state students, if you're here, let's just have you unmute. And when I, when I say your name, if you could just maybe say something, just so we can see your face as we're going through here. So first, we'll start with the band, the all-state band students, Jonah Walt. And Aiden Endress. I don't think he was able to make it either. Christian Hadine is not here, but I know his parents are, so they can say hi.
Hi, we're representing tonight.
Nice. Caleb Olson is here.
Hello.
And Will Clifford is here as well.
Hello.
And then our all-state choir students, Megan Brown, I don't think I saw. And Ben Witt is here.
Uh.
And Nate Schindler I saw as well.
Yep. Hello.
And Mackenzie Clemmons, I know, is in, with that wonderful backdrop there.
Hello, everybody.
And Ben Seaman-Aller, I don't think I saw Ben. And I know Simon Hadine's at a sporting event. So congratulations to these students. It's, it's an outstanding testament to their, their leadership and dedication to our music program. So we're so excited about their participation in all-state. We have one other recent announcement that I thought I'd share with you as well. Last year, we were very fortunate to receive the best communities, best communities for music education award through the NAMM Foundation. And we just found out this past couple of weeks that we received that for the second year in a row. And we're, we're one of only six school districts in the state that have received that, that award. And I'll just tell you about it just briefly here. The award is given to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access and education to all students. And the process was a survey, a detailed survey. And we answered questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instruction time, facilities, support for the music program, and community music-making program. And really want to thank Cheryl Borgan at the middle school for heading this up and taking care of getting all those, those details together. So we're excited about that. So congratulations to you, too. Because that's a, that's a community effort to, to make that happen. So thank you.
Board members, I don't know if you have any questions or comments?
Very quickly, y'all should be incredibly proud of yourselves. This is, this is huge. And I am so, like, I have goosebumps just thinking about this. Congratulations, and I'm really excited for you. Enjoy this, 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 this moment. Outstanding, outstanding job.
Yeah, congratulations. And thank you so much for coming onto the meeting tonight and sharing this great news with us. Really appreciate it. And I am not myself musically talented, and so I'm just in awe of everyone who can do this and is so incredibly gifted at it. So thank you for sharing those gifts with our district and with our state.
Just a question for the students, for those of you that are leaving Hastings High School after this year, do you have plans to continue your music career?
Yeah, yep, I'm gonna go into music education.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah. Yep, for like vocal music, so.
Okay, and where are you gonna do that?
At Warburg College in Waverly, Iowa. It's a small private school, but they're super well-known for music.
Yep, very well-known. Awesome.
I'm also gonna be continuing and doing music education also for vocals.
That's fantastic. And do you know where? I know it's not made, at Bethel. Excellent. All right.
I, I know Jonah and Aiden are not on the call right now, but somebody correctly, I think they're both going for performance music, Jonah and saxophone, and Aiden and drums.
Yes.
Possibly both to a clarif, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, Jonah's playing on clarif and Aiden is University of Northern Iowa.
Oh, excellent. Okay.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson, and students and parents for being here tonight. And it's just another example of through this crazy year, how we have all these pockets of awesomeness still taking place in Hastings and how our, our kids are resilient and keep doing what they do and doing it well.
Love that term, pockets of awesomeness.
I was just, I was writing it down.
Yeah, I'm gonna steal that one.
Yep, me too. That's a good one. Well, thank you again for joining us tonight and congratulations again on your wonderful achievement.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. So next up in our agenda is our discussion items, beginning with communities in schools.
Yeah, so I know I saw her earlier, there she is. We have Amanda Saffa here tonight, who you will all recognize. She's the CEO and President of Community and Schools in the Twin Cities. And so in our conversations, Amanda and I thought it would be a good idea for her to come back and give an update on how things are going. And and so that's why she's here. So Amanda, I will turn it over to you.
All right, it's nice to see everyone again. I wish it was in person, but this is good enough for now, I suppose. So lots of familiar faces and names, but it has been a while since we had an opportunity to meet and talk about communities and schools. So like Superintendent McDowell said, I'm just here to kind of give you a brief update and let you know how things have been going with Kel over at the high school. So Kel started at the high school last year in March, exactly one week before the pandemic hit. So she had a very, very brief snippet of what life was gonna be like at the high school, and then everything shifted out. And Kel, just like the rest of my team, basically had to take a model that is designed to be in-person, direct service with students, and kind of turn it on a dime and change everything over to the virtual world. So we worked last spring really hard at how we were gonna make that happen and how we were gonna continue to support our students through that process. And Kel really did amazing. You know, she has fit in so well with the team at the high school, and they were so excited to have her join them last spring. They actually had a caseload of 25 students already for her the day she walked in the door. And so they took care of getting the parent consent and communicating all of that, which was just fabulous, because it allowed her to really hit the ground running with those students. So we greatly appreciate that team and how welcoming they have been for Kel over at the high school. So as I mentioned, everything shifted to virtual last spring. And then as we kind of went into the school year, things have gone back and forth. We've done some hybrid, we've done some distance, we've done some in-person. Kel is at the high school as much as, as possible and is allowed. If you've ever had the opportunity to meet Kel, she is very much a people person. Principal Johnson and I and the team over there selected Kel for that reason. She really is the right person to be working with those students, and she wants to interact, she wants to be face-to-face with those kids. So she has tried as much as possible to be there, and then obviously done everything virtually that she can. So this year, where we're at right now, she is actively working with a caseload of about 38 students right now. She's had 46 total over the course of the year. Some have kind of fallen off, you know, that virtual connection with some students isn't great. They're still technically on her caseload, so as we get back to school and we get back to normal, she can pick those students up and start working with them again, as she can connect with them in person. As it sits right now, about 65% of her caseload is freshmen. And that's been very intentional in the school's part, I think. When we came in, we knew that that was a grade that they definitely wanted assistance with. And most of the assistance at this point is focused on academics. And I think that actually is the case across all, all of our locations. Normally, there's kind of a bigger spread of the different types of services that we offer. But with distance learning and with the pandemic, it's become extremely evident that all of our students really need that academic support. And so that's what our team has kind of shifted in making sure that we are providing that support in a variety of different ways. So like I said, 65% ninth graders, 24% are 10th graders, and then the rest are juniors and seniors. Most of these students are still being assigned by the school counselors, which is great. Again, Kel is very much part of that school support team and really enjoys working with those folks. I had an opportunity to attend a meeting with them recently, and it was just great to kind of sit back and listen and watch them interact, because they were just, they were joking around, and it was very obvious that she was very much part of that team. And that's exactly what we want to see. You know, she's a communities and schools employee, but she needs to be part of that school team in order to be effective with the students at the high school, and she definitely is. What we'd like to see in the future, I think, as we start to get back to normal, hopefully at some point, is that more of the other school staff also start to utilize Kel as a resource. So it's great that these students are, that the referrals are coming from the school counselors, but we also want this to be a resource for teachers, too. So she's had a couple of teachers who have referred students to her for academic or other reasons. But as we start to get back into the schools and are seeing these folks more often, we want to make sure that they're utilizing her as well and, and using her as a resource whenever possible. Talked to Kel a little bit, kind of about what she's focused on right now and what she's looking forward to most. She talks a lot about summer. So our program is normally just a school year program. But last year, when the pandemic hit, we realized that we really needed to shift that model and have it carry through year-round. So our site coordinators maintained contact with our case-managed students over the course of the summer last year. And this year, we're anticipating helping out with summer school or any kind of credit and recovery that the schools put in place over the summer, because we know what a negative impact the pandemic has had on student learning and the incredible learning loss that some of our kids are seeing as a result. And so our staff are gonna be available to help with those things. I know that she's already been asked to help with the summer school that's gonna be taking place over at the high school. And so we're, we're figuring out how to make that work in her schedule, because we definitely want her there to support students. And then she's also reaching out into the community to find activities for students over the summer. So again, this is a connection piece with these students and making sure that we recognize them not only as students but as individuals. She's been working with one student recently, who she said it was really hard to connect with them. But once it kind of got back into school a little bit, she was able to see him a couple of times face-to-face, she was able to start building that connection. She was able to find him some people to sit with at lunch, because he was struggling with that. She was able to get him some tutoring in math, so that he can get caught up on some assignments. And then she was able to find a summer program for him that will work with his passion for podcasting and radio and get him involved in that. So she's working on some of those types of things with her different case-managed students. Another story that she shared about one of her students is just kind of how she's seen these kids blossom, right? So again, a lot of them struggled with this distance learning thing, and the fall was hard, because we didn't know what school year was gonna look like. And so some of them pulled back a little bit and maybe weren't as willing to jump in. But once you get to know Kel, it's really hard to not want to jump in and work with her, because she really has that type of personality. And so she said this about one of her kids. She was working with a 16-year-old who was really quiet. And their first meeting was only about five minutes long, and it was filled with mostly one-word answers on the student's part. He was failing all of his classes, and his mom was pretty much at the end of her rope and really didn't know what to do with this student. She's gotten to know him, and now he jumps on Zoom calls with her. He voices when he needs extra support in his classes, and he takes initiative to write emails to teachers, when before he wouldn't even respond to text messages from her. This was at the beginning of the semester, and she said at that time he was passing all of his classes and didn't have a single missing assignment and was really working hard to stay on top of his homework. So that's the type of success that we're hoping to see with all of our students. Our overall goal is to get all of our students to the goal achievement of 80% or more. So we set individual goals with our students, and it's a variety of things based on what they need. It can be improving grades in certain classes, it can be improving standardized test scores or their overall GPA. We set goals with them based on exactly where they're at and what supports they need. And then we'll work with them over the course of, you know, their case-managed services to achieve those goals. I think at last report, she was somewhere right around that about 60% or 70% of our students were achieving their goals, which for this year is really good. I think my goal of 80% is pretty lofty for this year. We are working really, really hard with our students just to keep their heads above water, to get them through this, because this is something that none of us have ever experienced before. And nobody, I don't think, really understood how this was gonna work and how this was gonna impact students. And so as long as we can keep them moving forward, that's really our goal this year. Keep them invested, make sure that they understand the importance of school and the importance of these connections, and to get them to pass as many classes as possible and to, if they have to, then make up credits, those kinds of things, to keep them on the right track to do those things, so that we can get back to normal as quickly as possible. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of you. I know when we met a year and a half ago, roughly two years ago, you guys had a lot of questions, how is this gonna work? And I really hope that you see the benefit of this program. I know in talking to Principal Johnson and some of the other staff over at the high school, they really do, and they, they value Kel. And they think that this is a great thing for their students, and I think it's really helping those, specifically those ninth graders, that they were looking for some different tools for, to help them get set up and to really be successful in high school. So thank you all for your partnership and for allowing me to be here today. And thanks to, to the United Way. We really would not be here and be able to serve these students if they weren't a partner as well, and if they weren't so hugely supportive of everything that we're doing over at the high school, these kids. So are there any questions?
Hello, open it up. Does anyone have any questions? Not seeing any. Hope Lisa does.
So, yeah, one, I have a comment. First, your comment, I have, I have an opportunity to take the time to participate in the Helping Kids Succeed, which is the United Ways. They just be doing Zoom calls, kind of update community-wide programs. And Kel is a, is a very active and positive participant. So I just, we just second everything that Amanda has said. It's very, it comes through even on Zoom. Um. The question I have, and maybe it's not answer right now, is and Amanda touched on it again, which is funding. So I know this is a shared funding between a grant from United Way and the district. And as we go forward into next school year, which will be summer school, what does that, what's our, what's our funding plan?
So Superintendent McDowell and I have talked about this briefly, because we are up for contract renewal. Our contract period with both the school district and the United Way ends on June 30 of this year. So we have separate contracts that we need to work on with both entities. And the United Way, from what I understand, is fully on board with continuing to support this program. And Superintendent McDowell and I have talked, and I think he's provided positive feedback as well. So I think that that's gonna be moving forward. We just gotta get those, those contracts finalized.
Yeah, our plan, based on the positive feedback and just the, the needs that it seems to be addressing, is enough for us to, to continue with the, with the program and, and give our students as many opportunities for support as we can.
Terrific, I'm happy to hear that.
All right, thank you for that update. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much for being here, Amanda, and for filling us in. And I know that this year has been I don't, there are a lot of words to possibly describe it, but I'm not sure there's one that really encompasses it. So it's been an interesting year. And so it's, it's great that we've had the added support to be working with our students, and thank you for all you and Kel are doing to help the kiddos in our district.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Right, you too. Okay. So that's, next up is policies. So we do have a couple of policies that are set for a second reading. And so if after the second reading, if we want to move them to an action item, we are able to. So the first policy is policy 428, ethical behavior for employees. So are there any questions or comments about this one that you'd like to address? That would need to be changed? Not seeing any. So with that, is there a motion to move policy 428 to an action item?
So move.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of moving policy 428 to an action item, please say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. Right, motion carries. So we will see this one again later. Next up is policy 429, conflict of interest.
I do have a comment, and I, I suspect it's only a typo.
Okay.
And that's in paragraph or section three, what constitute a conflict of interest in the list. Couple paragraphs down, there's a list. And list item D says spouse of individual listed in A or B. And I, I think that should read spouse of individual listed in B and C. So it's referring to items further up in the list. So I think that's a typo, and I think it can go forward with that corrected.
Okay. Think that's a fair assumption. I think spouses of spouses. Yes.
Good catch, Lisa. I didn't see that.
I didn't see it the first time we read it either, obviously. That's how I get to second reading, so. Between 14 readings, we can find it. We all read it twice. Okay, that was all. Thank you.
All right. So then with that minor change, do we have a motion to move it forward? As an action item?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of moving policy 429 to an action item, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. Now we'll move into administrative reports.
You gotta keep it down on the ball field, gee.
Oh, I'm muting, I'm muting.
No, you're not, I'm just kidding. Sounds fun. Ah, all right, so I've got a couple items to cover tonight. I just want to let the board and everyone know that right now our, our COVID numbers are holding. Since we moved to hybrid in the high school, we've dropped back down to five to 10 students a day that we end up quarantining, which is what was, where we were prior to spring break. So that's good. Our middle school numbers are up there. We're seeing about 15 to 20 kids on any given day that are having close contact. But still, holding steady in terms of the number of kids who are actually symptomatic, which is normal. A lot of kids, our adolescent kids are asymptomatic, it seems like that are positive. Our elementary schools, we have had a couple classrooms that have gone out in a couple buildings. Just due to the close contact, remember, everybody now that's in person, except for the hybrid, is either short of three feet or within three feet of people. However, the quarantining, quarantining guidelines are six feet. So you kind of double your number there. So in an elementary class, if we need to quarantine or close contact a couple of kids, it doesn't take much to have to send a class out. But overall, the numbers in our buildings are staying steady, and we're checking in every day with our principals to make sure we don't need to be making some adjustments there. Related, we just got news this week that the Minnesota government has approved the federal government's meal program moving into next year. So we're gonna be able to continue with meals. So we're excited about that as we move forward, because that's been a big part of what we've been able to do for families in need. And, and really, it's for anyone at this point. And then related more academically, we are in the final processes of our accreditation process for online learning academy. So we've, we have that academy going this year, right, due to COVID? But we, in the fall, applied to the Department of Education to get accredited as a online provider. And so we've gone back and forth with a couple revisions, and we're scheduled to meet here again. And hopefully, we'll, we'll get the green light to be officially approved as an accredited online provider moving forward, which I think opens up some doors for us moving forward past COVID and even into future years, and we can, we can provide online services. And then the, the big thing happening right now is really our strategic planning. And so we're actually in about the last quarter of the, of the run here with strategic planning. So to this point, we've collected over 1,400 surveys, which has resulted in about 175-page document of results, most of which are our, our survey results from our families. But we also surveyed our staff and students. And so all of that was put together over the past couple of weeks. And then last week, we conducted with about 50 of our staff members what's called a story wall process, where we look at the history all the way back about 35 years of Hastings, and what has happened? What was going on at the time things happened? And really, it's What was going on at the time things happened? And really, it's a process to help staff start to understand what should we be doing next? And we said, we look at the life cycle of an organization and whether or not we are kind of stagnant in certain areas, or whether we're ready to kind of springboard into what's next. And those two things really combine with what's happened, what finished up on Monday, which was our focus groups. And so what we did in addition to the surveys was we identified affinity group families that are families who are typically underrepresented in things that we do. And so we had five focus groups. They finished last, last one finished last night. We took all of that information and then, or that ended Monday night, I apologize. But we took all that information and from the results of all of that stuff, the building and district administration last night worked on what's called an environmental scan. And so what we're working on is looking at what's working, what's not working, where people feel we are, and then using the input from all of those surveys and the story wall and the focus groups, creating what are called vision cards, which really, as you process through them as a team, work out these big lever points, which you as a board will get here as we finish up in our operational planning and our school improvement planning and our department planning. You'll get what we've considered as leverage points as an administration in terms of what are the big things that we really feel we need to be putting our resources towards in order to make the biggest amount of improvement and growth in the coming years. So it's been a lot of work, a lot of nights for our administrative staff at this point, but I think it's going to pay off. I think we've got a really nice set of documents. And as the documents are finalized, we've created a webpage off of our website that says strategic planning. And so, for example, probably tonight or tomorrow, the story wall results will be posted, and it'll be a singular document that people can review. But survey document, once that is finalized, that'll be posted, all the results from the focus groups, the vision cards, so the public can see what's going on, which leads me to the last group, which three of you are on, on, working on this right now. But we also have our new community engagement group. And part of that group's work is going to be adding in the lens of the community and what the community values as part of a school system inside of the community. And so at the end, hopefully by June, we will have a nice direction of where we should be going next for Hastings Public Schools. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions people have at this point or comments and go from there.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? All right, I have, I have two. My first one is, you said there were five focus groups. How many people total ended up coming to those focus groups? Do you have that number?
We were going to ask that. And the one, as I was pulling this document up, it's, I looked, I'm looking at the numbers. I'm like, that is the one number I don't have, and someone's going to ask it. I'm going to have to send that to you because I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
See, I just knew it wasn't in the document, so I had to come up with the question.
It's my fault.
And then my next question is, after that website goes online with the strategic planning information, can you let us know?
Yes. The website or the webpage is online right now. It's up and running. It only has our timeline on it right now. But if you go to about us, so you know what, I can actually probably share my screen so that people could see it. Just do it that way quickly. All right. Grab the right screen up. I'm going to go with yes. So if going to our website, if you go to about us, you'll see at the bottom, it says strategic planning or strategic plan. And if you click on that, you'll see that it really talks about what our plan is. And then over off to the left is where as the documents get finished, they're going to live right there. So the one right now is timeline, probably tomorrow, that story while we'll be living right here. And then the environmental scans and survey results will live down on this side. So again, about about us and then strategic plan.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any other questions? Looking, and I'm not seeing any.
All right. And we're going to flow right into building construction, fund project update.
I have a few updates I can share on this one. So the high school building automation system replacement project has been completed and has been moved into that top category there of completed projects. And that has a remaining funds balance of a little over a million dollars. So that will help with that contingency as we look at new projects. Another kind of good news item for the middle school project, we received a rebate last month for eighty-eight thousand dollars related to that project. So that helps that project. And then you can kind of see that many of the projects are moving up, you know, so they're either now in process or in design, what we currently have left in future that has been identified are two projects. There's some new projects that'll get added, but from the original bond, there's just two projects left in that future. And we're continuing to focus on the in-process projects to close those out. Many of those projects are really close. So we're really working to close those projects out. And that's it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Right. Any questions for Jen? Thank you for just keeping this list updated. I mean, it's been great, not just for the board, but I mean, in the facilities committee meeting and and all of that, just having this so organized is greatly appreciated.
All right, you want to move right into?
Yeah.
Moment then?
It was during there hasn't been a big change. We're down about nine kids from last month, and that's overall. We did get a few new families in and a few families out. So overall, just a decrease of nine students.
All right, any questions on that bit? Don't see any. So I guess we just keep moving right on through.
All right. So we got Kathy Mullen here, and I know Lisa was, oh, I don't see her anymore. Well, we have Kathy for sure to talk about self-funded.
All right. Good evening. To give you an update on our insurance committee, we did not actually hold an April insurance committee because we were in the middle of our open enrollment period. We started our open enrollment on April 12th, and it will be running through May 2nd at midnight. We made some changes this year to our open enrollment process. One, what we did this year is we sent out an email to all of our employees that described all of our insurance and our benefits. And we included links right to documents from that email so that they could easily get to the enrollment information if they wanted to write from the email. We also this year provided employees with a video that provided them a narrative, a verbal narrative on all of our insurance plans and the other benefits that are available to them through the district. And within that video, we embedded links to all of the different materials and the form so that they, if they were going through the video, they could click on any section of the video they wanted to. And then they could also get to the forms and the documents right from that video. And then the other piece we did was we created, we, we had a benefits guide that had not gone out with enrollment last year. We spent quite a bit of time getting that updated and getting information included in it. So we have a very detailed and in-depth benefit guide that also went out to all of our employees via a link and was embedded within that video. So employees could get to that guide through that video. So there was a lot of different ways for them to get the information, hopefully all in easy ways. And we've not had any issues that we're aware of so far. So that has gone well. To give you just an update on our individual plans, on our medical and dental plans, our medical plan is currently running at eighty-seven percent of expected for claims as compared to ninety-eight percent of expected last year. Our reserve for our medical plan continues to remain above both our target and our, our projected target and our goal reserve. So it's doing very well. And then lastly, our dental plan also continues to do well with our funding exceeding our claims. Our claims costs are running about sixty-eight thousand dollars lower than we were at at this time last year. So everything is going very well. I'm happy to answer questions.
Scott.
Yeah, big surprise. I'd have a question. What communication has gone out about the change in prescription benefit that that is going to occur?
So we had information included in the email that I sent out that kind of described the changes. We had a couple slides in our video that explained the change in the pharmacy benefits plan. There was also a separate handout that provided information and directions on the, it actually has a an app that that you can use from your phone to get a lot of information, including your claim status and where you are. And a mailing will be going out directly from Max or to our employees as well. So we've been trying to get it out in various different forms to make sure people understand.
Yep, that's great because I I knew that that was one of the deltas this this year. So I just wanted to make sure that that one was being addressed correctly, and it sounds like it is well on hand.
All right.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's it for me.
Any, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
For that update. So it looks like Lisa is back just in time to go through. Would you like, if you can't access it, would you like Dave or I to go over the facility summary?
No, that's fine. I can go over it. I'm just, I'm only on on audio. So.
Okay.
Whatever that means. But so we did have a facilities committee meeting. The full minutes are attached, sort of the big points, the things that we're going to see today is there were two bid openings for deferred maintenance at both Kennedy and McCullough Elementary sites, where the bids came in kind of notably above the estimate, even a recent estimate. Wold did an analysis of the scope of work and the market pressures and has recommended approval. And the facilities committee is recommending approval of those two particular contracts. The facility committee is also well aware of the fact that we need to keep an eye on if this is a trend. And if it's a trend, how that impacts any future contracts or potential ads. So we are recommending approval of these two items that are represented in the consent agenda. And we'll be watching it trend over time. And we have a few planning updates, most, most of which were just sufficient to read the minutes. There is a question at hand regarding the middle school track. At our last board meeting, we did approve adding that project. Some of the initial planning and engineering has identified some soil, very poor soil conditions at the track that could result in significant construction costs. So that's back for consideration with the athletic directors. And we'll be bringing that, you know, back into future facility committees. But we did not get good news on that particular project to this point. And then that planning team that was recently completed to look at pre-K space and determine that, you know, we can really work within our pre-K space is not that exact team, but that similar structure is going to be used to look at alternative learning centers and how that's going to be approached by the district. So that's sort of the the next big facilities assessment or space assessment work that's going to be done. We have a number of projects that are very close to close out, kind of in their final final paperwork stages. And our future topics are going to, going to kind of continue to work within the baseball field, district office updates, work at secured entrances, the alternative learning center. Feedback on how we can approach middle school track. And some modifications that might be required at the high school gender neutral bathroom. And then keep us, keep ourselves updated, both the facility committee and the board on bid trends. Just to see if that's a full market thing or if it was specific to the work in these most, two most recent contract openings. And we're inspired by by policy. So the facilities committee is intending to meet monthly for the next couple of months to kind of stay on top of the summer work.
Thank you, Lisa.
I did have a question. Did you have any more insight on, on the world piece, the world, the deferred maintenance and the bids coming in higher? Was it due to increased material costs or specialized resources that we needed on site or just lack of resources in the industry or some combination thereof? I mean, was the indicator pointing in one direction?
Mechanical work. That there was just market pressure. I mean, there, there were numerous bidders, six to eight bidders on each of those, and they were all pretty close together. So it, it, you know, it wasn't that, that nobody's bidding, it was not competitive, but that the work in the mechanical space was up. And the discussion was around the idea that what we might be looking at is where the work being done by the district overlaps with work being done in residential housing. So plumbing, mechanical, electrical, there's a lot of market pressure there right now.
Well, we know, yeah.
And that'll be, it'll have to be something we watch, but.
Well, especially if it's competing with the res, I, I didn't know that there was that overlap with residential. That, that helps explain it.
Yeah, it was specific, and that's why we're not clear if it was specific to these contracts. Because there was that overlap, and that's not commonly true with our work. But we do have some of that, right? We're going to be doing some modifications of bathroom facilities, which will have that overlap. So it's certainly something we have to keep an eye on.
Right, thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, you bet, Scott.
And Dave, I saw you unmuted. Did you have something to add?
No, I think that Lisa covered it, you know.
Okay.
It's, it's the situation, Scott, where the market is what it is. The bidders all came in higher than what we had estimated. And, you know, it's, it's just a market move, I guess, for right now.
Right. Any other questions for Lisa or the facilities committee? All right, I'm not seeing any. So thank you for the update, Lisa. And we will move on to policy committee. So policy committee met just on Monday this week, which is why we ended up not bringing the equity policy forward again this week, just to give some more time so that it wasn't a last minute ad there. We had to reschedule from the meeting last week. But we did look at a number of policies. So the first policy we looked at was disproportionate enrollment, which is not a policy that many districts have. In fact, and the only districts we found that had comparable policies were very outstate Minnesota districts. And there is no MSBA model policy on this. So what this was really looking at is like making sure that there was proportional representation in courses by gender and race and such. And so what we talked about as a committee was whether this was the policy that was needed, if we wanted to continue having this policy. If we were going to have this policy, it needs to change from four oh three because MSBA actually has a different policy four oh three. And so we would change the number to be in alignment. And what we ended up deciding was that if the equity policy passes, then that really encompasses what's in this policy. And so at that time, we can look at removing this policy. We also looked at policy four thirty, which was the staff recognition policy. And if you recall, we had reached out to staff and gotten some feedback. And at the last policy committee meeting, Kathy Mullen actually had come up with a new draft policy, which gives a lot more flexibility to the district to kind of make decisions on a year-by-year basis, depending on where finances are, what sort of recognition items may be available and things like that. Now, one thing that we have to check on is whether we are allowed to have that flexibility legally or whether we need to have the specific amounts specified in policy. And so Kathy was going to reach out to Kevin Rep on that. Now I see Kathy has her video on, so I'm wondering if she has an update.
Yes, I do.
She may. Okay.
I was able to confirm. I was able to confirm with Kevin that the way our policy is written is compliant with the statute. So we are okay to move forward as we have it written.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was quick feedback to get um from Kevin. So I appreciate that update. Um, and then, as I said, uh, we did talk about the equity policy again, taking in account feedback that we received from the board at our last meeting, and we have made a number of changes. And so those will be brought forward uh at next month's meeting for the board to look through and see what they think. And then last um is the public and private personnel data. And so this will have a first reading next month. And it's gone to Kevin Rep for review. And um it's really been changed. Uh, statute has us needing to put a point of contact in there. And so Kathy has been put in as the responsible authority as required. And so as I said, that will be coming forward next week, but that's all we have. So are there any questions for policy? Regarding any of those items.
Hey, Kelsey, it's Lisa. Uh, just for clarity, so the equity policy, did that come to a business meeting for a, I don't know where we're at now, second reading, or is it coming back to the work session uh early in May?
So the plan was for it to come in to the regular meeting as a third reading.
What?
Third reading.
I'm hoping a way to pick them up. I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
Yeah, to come to a to come to a regular board meeting for a third reading. So we believe that with the feedback we received from board members, uh, both during the retreat and all of that, that we'll be able to um incorporate all of that feedback into the new written policy.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to understand when we were going to see it next. I, I don't have an opinion about how it should come forward. So thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay. Then we will move on to our action items. So first up is the consent agenda. And again, for the community, uh, you can see all of the items for this on Board Book if you're curious. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just one, yep, just one item. And this is in the personnel section. Just there are some, there are some of our staff that have been with us for decades that are retiring. And I just, I, I want to say thank you to them as a group. And thank you to one in particular who I know had a pretty profound impact on my son through the football program. And I won't name names, but one of his favorite things is there's two things that you can control here, and that's your attitude and your work ethic. So just thank, thank you to the entire group.
Thank you. And so if you are curious in the personnel report, that is where we approve retirements. So we do see a lot of staff, not a lot, but we do see some phenomenal staff coming through. And I always consider it an honor to approve retirements. And I'm approving a dear friend's retirement tonight. So I'm very excited. So. All right. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign? All right, motion carries. Items for individual action. So this one will need a resolution. Uh, the first uh item is donations. So Stephanie, this will come to you.
Hi, Stephanie Mom. Introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas School Board Policy seven zero six establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts and donations to the district. Whereas Minnesota Statute Section four six five point zero three states that the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two thirds of its members. And whereas the reference donations in the District two hundred donations report from October to December two thousand twenty have been generously donated. Can I get a second?
I can.
Go move.
Becky Bysel, I think I heard you first. Uh, Becky Bysel duly seconded uh the motion for adoption of the foregoing resolution. Voting in favor of the resolution, we will do a roll call vote. Becky Bysel?
Yes.
Brian Davis?
Yes.
Scott Gergen?
Yes.
Lisa Hadeen?
Yes.
Stephanie Mom? Yes. Dave Pembel?
Yes.
Kelsey Waits?
Yes.
Therefore be it resolved by the Hastings Public School District School Board to gratefully uh accept these gifts.
All right. Thank you very much, Stephanie. And thank you so much to the community uh for your donations. That's always something that I am just blown away by the generosity that um this community shows for our district and for our students. So thank you very much. The next item is the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three calendar final draft.
All right. And I'll probably bring Kathy Mullen back up just as a backup here to make sure that I don't mess up. I probably should just let her talk about it because she'll do it more clearly than I will. Actually, so since you're there right away, Kathy, I'll let you explain what we did here.
All right. Um, I, I'll keep this brief. At the, the request of the board, we did take the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar back and relook at the date, uh, January sixteen, twenty twenty-three, which was the Martin Luther King Day. The request of the board was that we change this to a non uh school, non-staff day. Um, so what we have done with the calendar is January twenty-third, January sixteen, twenty twenty-three has been made a black um day, which is, you'll see as a no school, no students, no teachers. We have moved, um, that was a PD day. And, and because of that, and we need to keep the number of PD days in, we did shift the PD day. You'll see a yellow box on February twenty-first following the February twentieth day. So that is now a PD day. And then we also, in doing that, shifted the end of the school year back from the seventh and with the eighth being a workshop day, and the last day is now the eighth with the ninth being a workshop day. The one piece I just wanted to make sure um that the board was aware of in doing this move. The, the sixteenth is a non-student, non-school year staff day. The way it works for all of our twelve-month employees, however, it would be much like a s- um, spring break day where you see black days that are Christmas breaks or spring break. Um, for our twelve-month employees, these would be days that they would then, if they wanted to be off on those days, they have leave available to them through personal leave or vacation. So this, it's a non-school, non-student day. For our twelve-month staff, they would use a leave day on this day. The only other way that we had to do it was to make it an all-staff holiday. So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't presenting it in a way different than what you were understanding or expecting and make sure that you're okay with that.
So do we have any questions while Kathy is here? And I want to just make sure, since we did spend quite a bit of time talking about this, that everyone feels comfortable with the changes and how they present. Not seeing any questions or concerns. So, all right, with that, do we have a motion to approve the calendar?
So move.
Second.
Any more discussion? Just like to say thank you for, for working in the change. And uh, you know, it was kind of a a later than usual approval process here for that, but we appreciate the work. All right. So with that, all those in favor of the new school calendar, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? All right, motion carries. All right, now here is the new ad, the McCullough Wall Panel Project.
Yeah, so I'm going to bring Cameron Peterson up. See if we can, there he is right there on cue. Awesome. So um, like uh, Kelsey had kind of laid the groundwork for, just the way the timing worked on this process is we were able to get bids done and solidified on Monday of this week. Um, and because of the lead time timing and because we need to get contracts going, um, we felt it was important to uh at least get this in front of you and add it. Um, and so I'll let Cam explain kind of what this is to refresh your memory um on the actual project, but it is that leaking wall at McCullough.
So I'm, I'm sure a lot of you have heard about this situation in the past. It's been going on for a long time. Um, it was first brought up in two thousand eleven. We noticed that there was some water, water coming in through the wall, and there was some staining on the walls and on the ceiling. So there's kind of a long history of having, cleaning that, um, having dirt and mold come back, cleaning it, painting it, abating it, having it come back again. And we've had numerous environmental companies out, engineer companies out to take a look at that to help us identify the problem. We've cut holes in the roof. We've taken flashing off. We've um done leak testing on the wall. Um, and we keep coming back to the wall. So really what we need to do is put up a vapor barrier over the outside of that br- brick wall. And then we attach metal wall panels over the top of that. Um, and that keeps any moisture out and any rain out whenever we have a driving rain or any kind of moisture that gets against that wall. It's had a long history and um we saw evidence of that infiltration again coming this fall. So we got ready and we got a project to, together to uh put wall panels up this summer. So thank you for being able to slide us in. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do we have any questions on this project? Lisa, I see you might.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I just lose track of if I'm muted or not. Um, my question is, is this LTFM or is this just a capital expense or a bond expense?
This is.
I feel like the bids are super competitive. They, yeah.
Um, and that is an interesting note from what um we talked about earlier with the deferred maintenance projects. This project came in with a low bidder at one hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred. The high bidder was two hundred and ninety-one thousand. Um, we had three who were on the lower end and two that were mid and high. Um, so there was a fair range there. We budgeted conservatively at three hundred thousand, and that's close to that high rate. But this is a project that doesn't have any crossover with residential materials. It is affected a little bit by the price of steel. But it's not affected by as much market pressure as what we've seen on the other two projects we've talked about.
Okay, terrific. And thanks for expanding on that and letting us know what the original budget was too. So.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? Right, I'm not seeing any. So if the board is comfortable moving forward with this, we can take a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign? All right, motion carries.
Uh, Chair Waits, could I just, I just want to let everybody know that uh it was, we're not going to plan to make a habit of bringing something at the last minute. Um, that was not, it's not something that uh Cam missed. Um, it was just because it was a deferred maintenance thing. And when Cam brought it to me, I just thought this is something we got to get moving on. And so that's the reason for the last minute on this one. Anything else we would have brought through Facilities Committee, but it just seemed like the timing was of the essence. And so I appreciate you uh being willing to take it on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Actually, Cam, you know, I really appreciate the time you guys took. It sounds like you guys tried everything. You know, before you got to this point. And that's always appreciated in trying basically exhausting all their alternatives that are less expensive before you end up having to do something like this. So thank you for your due diligence on it.
Thanks, Brian. A lot of it was scratching our heads trying to figure out the, figure out the issue.
All right. Also, with that, we will move on and go back to the policies uh that we had done as the second reading earlier. So first up is policy four twenty-eight ethical behavior for employees. So do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion on this? Right. Then all those in favor of approving policy for twenty-eight, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? All right, motion carries. Next up is policy four twenty-nine, conflict of interest. So do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Is there any more discussion? Right, all those in favor of approving policy four twenty-nine, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign? All right, motion carries. So last up is just looking at our future meetings. Uh, so policy committee will be meeting next week. Wow. As will um the finance committee and the community engagement committee. So next week is a very busy week for the board. The board work session will be on the twelfth, and the next regular board meeting is the twenty-sixth. And in between those, we will also have a facility committee meeting. So have lots of updates for the next regular board meeting. And so with that, we can take a motion to adjourn and enjoy some of this nice weather we have.
A move. Second.
It was fast. I didn't even finish.
The sun is finally shining.
The sun's shining. Let's go.
I know. I'm like, half of my face is.
And Kelsey, your, your dog wants to go for a walk.
No, she's the laziest dog in the world. Wants to sleep here all day.
I just want to find out from Lisa what the score is.
I think it's over.
Uh, it's over. Hastings lost five-three to Hillbury.
Oh. Okay, thanks.
All right. All right, all those in favor of a journey, say aye.
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 All right, meeting is adjourned. So, have a great rest of your night.
Be, be well.